Okay.
Call us many order. Um, first we pair with Jordan with us and the pledge of belief.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks everybody. Too big a crowd out tonight, they must be anticipating the next storm, or maybe they have other things today, but it is. Spring break is now officially begun, isn't it?
Yes.
It's official, isn't it? Okay, approval of the minutes of the March 31st, 2015 regular meeting, have a motion, please. Mr. Curry?
Second.
Mrs. Smith, done all yes?
Yes.
All yes, okay. Okay, public comments, did anybody sign in yet?
No, sir.
Okay, alright then, on our presentations, we have Howard Haas Farley from the Harts Community Center. Ben Farley.
Thank you, sir. Allowed me to come and speak to you, to talk to you a little bit about the Harts Community Center. The thing we're having up there is trouble with, you know, the county commission has kind of been frowning on the electric bills and the gas bills and utility bills that are up there right now. The copy that I gave you guys, and the reason I gave you this is, the school, I was telling Fred and Steve and Larry before you came in, we have done a lot, if you look at the electric bills, we have done a lot to bring the electric bills down. If you look last year's, one year ago, at the bottom of them, it shows the kilowatts that was used, we have dropped probably, we're saving now twelve dollars a day off the electric bill that we was getting last year at this same time. And the reason that we're asking for help, I hate to say that we're bumbling, but I guess we are, but the thing is, the middle school kids, the basketball, and listen, I haven't talked to Debbie about coming to talk to you guys, because I don't want nobody taking this the wrong way, that we are against kids using that facility. That's what I like seeing, is those kids are using it. Anything we got there, they need to be part of it, just like the weight rooms, we give the football coach a key, he takes them in the weight rooms, and as long as he's got, as long as they got an adult with them supervising, they can use those weight rooms anytime they want to. And, and this is not why I'm here, but the kids do use it, that's why I went to Logan County, their board of education, to see what they would say about, because Chattershill kids comes down and plays in the gym also. And, uh, the middle school kids, they use it for basketball, they'd rather practice on that floor than they would the new floor, that's what I was told, but don't make no difference, use it whenever they want to use it, they really, they get priority over everybody else. The baseball and softball use it, like on rainy days, from early season, from the time they say that you can start practicing, they start hitting the gym, okay? They use, they got a batting cage up on one side, they use hit to, for the pitching machine, and they got one side set up for the pitchers on the other side. And not, and like I said, I'm not doing this to stop any, anyone, but as long as it's open, they can still use it, you know, as long as we can pay the bills, I want them to use it. And that, this is coming from the board, I got it from our board elected to come to do this, okay? Me and Fred had talked earlier before about me coming and speaking and asking, can we get any help? And, and like I said, they use that part, okay? Our heating bill was, if you look at, through that, one of our heating bills for the gas was twenty-six hundred dollars, okay? Then the electric bill was, in January was eleven thirty-two. In February, the electric bill was twelve-ten. Then, and this electric bill hasn't been paid yet, it's nine fifty-one. The, if you turn on over, you see another electric bill, the electric bill there is the groundskeeper. They estimated it one, and it was three hundred and, uh, three thirty-six, human glasses on, three thirty-six, okay? They estimated that because the next one we got for him was just thirty bucks. So I figured that was about running us around a hundred and seventy-some to a hundred and eighty bucks a month. If you look at January's gas bill, was twenty-six hundred, okay? Then, February was twenty-four, thirty-eight. Then, this one that hasn't been paid is seventeen eighty-three, which come down quite a bit. But now, we take care of all the garbage in the gym, we buy all the garbage bags, we can buy all the cleaning supplies, we buy all the toilet tissue, or whatever's needed in the bathrooms on both sides. And when they use the gym, you know, these kids are going back and forth to the bathrooms and doing that, and, and the thing is, that still costs us money, understand what I'm saying? And people says, well, are you writing any grants? Or are you doing this? Or are you doing that? We're doing everything that we can. We got a program called Appalachian, I think it's regional service, I've got it back there. They are coming, we put in, they came and talked to us, they're coming to set up June and July into school, and they're gonna give us, for six weeks, they're gonna give us five, five thousand to use the facilities to stay there, so they can help the low income, the low housing people in, in our community to fix their houses up, or things like that that they need to have done. And they said that they may, uh, give us a contract for three years, if they do, it'll be five thousand the first year, six thousand the second year, seven thousand five hundred the third year. And I think it's a great thing. And, just like right now, Red Cross is being up there, working out there, FEMA sent some volunteers in there, that's going out and taking pictures, and, uh, the health department's been up there, water sampling, all that stuff that's going on at the community center right now. The community center is a great thing for everybody, and that's what you want to see, is everybody using it. And what we're expecting is, is some help, and, and I was gonna go further on the cost, you know, if you added those together, January was three thousand seven hundred dollars for heating and all, and the electric and heat, the gas. And February was thirty-nine eighty-five, and March was twenty-seven sixty-six. And, you know, we've got businesses in there, which we charge two fifty a month per room. We have a hairdresser in there right now, we have a photographer in there. We have, which county day is up there now, we have people from the community, like picking, like they pick in the park, they do that there on Friday nights. Uh, we have, trying to think, we have a game room set up, we have, which we make money off of that. Uh, we've had a tournament recently, a buddy league tournament, we got the concession stand, money off of that, they use the money at the door to, to, uh, pay the officials. But, things that we have done there is bought all the property around it, that belongs to the, the community center. We have put it, put it, in process of putting in a new sewer system, which costs twenty-two thousand. Uh, we're gonna finish that up, and we have put all the new lights in the gym, which cost us right at fifteen thousand. Things that we've done to, to cut our cost is, like I said, we've ordered now new lock boxes for all thermostat for any kids, or any of the public can get to it to turn it up, we can set them and leave them at that temperature and lock it, and nobody can fool it. Uh, we, we went around and sealing cracks, the old gym, the gym has got cracks you could see sometimes through, and we've put a new roof on part of it, which was thirty-three thousand dollars on the old part, where the old, if anybody was familiar with it, we're , I know Chris was, where the old, uh, principal's office was upstairs, that part was gone, we put, it's all new roof there, and that was leaking in the gym real bad, and the flat part where the dome comes down and run into the flat part, it was leaking, and that seam really, really bad, it pulled it all loose. They took all that off and put all new on that, that's all new, they seamed all the seams in the gym. Right now, we've got to get the, the guttering put back up, because the ice, when we had this bad winter, the ice all come off of that roof and ripped our gutters back loose, tore some of them back off, we're gonna have to have that done. Uh, but, there's some things that can be done, that would, that needs to be done, that we just don't have the funding to do it with. But, if you guys could help us with, with the energy, I'm, I'm talking about, these months here are probably our roughest months in the winter time, but the football uses it also, they use it to condition in, they use the weight rooms to condition in, and if there's any way that, that you can help us, it'd be appreciated, and listen, we're not sure to billify nobody, we're not sure to put nobody down, we're just asking, if you could help us, we'd really appreciate it.
How much you, how much you talking about?
Well, now, the board, the boards, we, we had a board meeting last Tuesday night, and we discussed it, and some of them, me, me and Fred talked, I said, five hundred, or any word above that, would greatly appreciate it, and it will be with me, but I got, they wanted half, they said, ask them, can they pay us half of what the electric bills would be in the bad months.
Have you computed what the?
No, no, it, anytime you want all this information, we'll sit down and fill all that out for you.
Half the electric bill or half the utility bill?
Half the utility bill.
Okay.
Let me, first of all, we're doing, let me just say, you know, we certainly agree wholeheartedly that it's a community building, and, you know, when the board gave the property to you guys, wish, yeah, I understand they want to set it up, we were a hundred percent for that.
Yes.
For a lot of reasons, for the community to do all these things you talk about, in addition to how it benefits the schools.
Yes, yes.
You know, we're all on the same page there.
Yes.
And, you know, I don't see you here begging for nothing, you're here to ask us to contribute, it's why you see, it's our fair share, and, and I think we probably agree. Now, what I'd first like to do before we go any further, is ask Mrs. Lucas legally, where do we stand on this deal?
Okay, legally, we can't just pay utilities for a facility, but what legally we can do is kind of like what we do for the Lions Club, we rent that, we rent the facility for a certain dollar amount for our students to be able to use the facility, and then that money is yours to do with, you know, as you want to need. That would be the way that, or, we want to be able to contribute to something that our students are utilizing.
Right, right.
And we want to make sure that we're following the.
Sure, oh absolutely, yes, yes.
But, you know, I, I think that is perfectly within the board's right to give a certain amount as a rental, um, fee for the use of the facility for our students to be able to utilize it.
And, and the coaches, they're, they're great, I mean, we've got some new ones, and they're great, they're doing, they're doing good, they're doing what they should be doing. It's just like, our, our garbage dumpster sits off the side that we use for the community center, well, we, we just get their garbage from the ball field, we just throw it in our dumpster, I mean, why not, I mean, it's right there, not throw it in your truck and haul it back down to the middle school, and, and throw it in the dumpster down there, we just take it away and throw it in our dumpster, you see what I'm saying? And everybody working together, there's no reason why that we couldn't, that gym is, is a great asset to the, to the kids, because where else in the county do you have two gyms that the girls can practice at the same time the boys practices? I mean, it, it's, it's, it's good, it's, it's good for the community. And, you know, not only that, on Friday nights, these, these guys come in, which we discussed this Tuesday night, we may have charged them those guys to come in, and you hate to do that, you know, charge my dollar or something, or two dollars or something, that just comes in, picks a, a pickup ball, you know? And those guys are great, they keep it clean, if we need to mop the, the floor, or if our groundskeeper needs to mop the floor, they jump in helping. And you, you hate to charge people like that, that really is buying into this, you know what I mean? And Friday nights, that's, that's, that's the night that they do it, because basketball, baseball and all that, they're out every time, everybody gets off work, comes in and starts playing anyway.
You know, you, I, when we first made this transition, by utilizing, you know, in working with, with you guys, we didn't have to build our own locker rooms, you know?
Yeah.
At one time, that was gonna be our plan, we wanted to build them underneath what's now the deputy.
Right, right.
So, you know, we, we saved some, saved money by not having to do that, we utilized probably a better locker room than we could have built anyway.
Oh, yeah.
So, I, you know, but once again, we, I think we all agreed that it's a cooperative thing, um, and, and I don't know how everybody feels, I think most people here probably think that we should contribute. Now, uh, I'm speaking out of term maybe, but I, I think I get that impression.
I think it's, I mean, I mean, we'd have to.
Our kids get the benefit. Yeah, I'm scared.
I actually thought we were going to from the beginning, and I thought.
We're not pack-baiting, pack, pack-baiting.
No, back.
Yeah.
It's not red and white.
Turn your tape.
We're off. We don't worry, he's got it on film there. Uh, but, now what we need to do, you know, like you say, we can't just say, you know, we're gonna pay half of a given month, and, and, you know, what we have to do is like, have some arrangement that would be legally, we could have our attorneys, you know, develop that, because Tyree can do it.
I mean, we could even lease a dressing room above it.
Well, I mean, just lease, uh, general, lease like we do at the Lions Club.
I've already talked about that, because we're probably down one fewer dressing rooms.
Yeah, yeah, we don't fool your guys' dressing room other than going and getting garbage and cleaning, so.
Well, I mean, but the Lions Club.
We could leave the dressing room.
Well, just to, you know, I think we could leave that up to, to Tyree of how we could work it, and just do it, an agreement like we have with the Lions Club, where it's an annual thing, and, because, see, out here, of course, we've got a lot of activities going here, Hamden got the ball games at night, and lights and all that, whereas at the high school, where I, I keep calling it high school, at the community center, uh, we already, you know, the board already has the ball field and the lights there.
Right.
So, you know, we're already having to deal with that, and that's not something you all have to take into consideration.
No.
So I think it's just a matter, you know, to me, it's like ten months a year, somebody's, we're probably utilizing that facility ten of the, the school.
From time it starts to the school's end.
Yeah, well, when football season begins to.
Yeah, softball, yeah.
Yeah, all that, so, ten months a year, so, you know, if you think in terms of ten months, of how much a month for ten months, that would be reasonable, uh, you know, because, you know, we'll have to do this, of course.
Sure, sure.
We'll have to act on it, and.
Sure, oh, yeah.
At some point to decide, but, you know, we just get a feel for what everybody thinks is fair. And, once again, it's, you can't really compare it to the Lions Club here in Hamden, because so many.
Oh, yeah.
Activities, there's baseball, and football, all these other things are going on there, and, and there's a lot over there, but compared to what we give them, because, you know, the operation business.
Well, I think Mr. Partey needs to give us back some figures, what he'd like for contributing, and we'll discuss it.
I want to see, what I wanted to see was the reaction of the board.
Oh, we're all.
Whether we need to progress forwards, or whether we need to just drop it, or, because you don't want to blow something plum out of the, out of the water before you ever get started, and the less people that's involved sometimes, the better off you are, you know?
Yeah. Did you mention your garbage bill, Al? I missed it, I mean.
The amount?
No, 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 I didn't miss the amount, no, I, that's not what we were, that, that's a small change, you know what I'm saying? The big chunk is the utility bills, you know what I mean? That's something, no, because we pay the garbage bill anyway, and we use it, it's never full anyway, and, you, we just throw that over there.
Now, I'm sure the new section you're putting in, we're using it.
Yeah, but, you know, that's already been appropriated, the money has, and we should be finishing that up, you know what I mean?
Air, air conditioning, uh, you have that, gym didn't use it.
It don't now, still don't.
You still don't?
Mm-mm, not in the summertime, not in the summertime, it's heat. That's right, that's right, you'll see the utility bill dropping off in the summer.
If you want to turn that heat down to about twenty degrees.
Yeah, yeah, that's true, you know, we've had maintenance men from, from the school come up there, they come up where we used to live, to hang the lights with, and they borrowed it, and they let us use it, and we hung all the lights in the gym, those guys said, told me, he said, you know what? I said, well, he said, this is probably the best gym floor they own in this thing for them. They said, yeah, they said, this floor has something to it, that when you, when you walk, the way that it feels, he said, it's different than any gym floor we have in the county. So what I was calling, they called, they've done like years and years and years ago, you know, things seem like were, were better back then. And, you know, the school has a sentimental value to a lot of us, you know, and as long as we can keep it, it's, it, it plays a part of who we are in the community, you know?
Well, we, you know, we wholeheartedly agree with all that, we think the board should provide something.
Okay.
We just need to kind of, I don't know, I think in terms of, you know, we, obviously we haven't talked about it, but, so much a month for ten months, you know, we give five hundred dollars a month, ten months, we gave five thousand dollars a year. I mean, I'm just throwing out a figure, I'm just off the top of my head, but, you know, in other words, what I'm saying, we consider it to be so much a month, because obviously in circumstantial here, the gym's not used that much, and so you don't have that.
That's right, well, you, you don't have, honestly, you don't have just lights, you know, and that's not much.
But, like what Chris pointed out there, you know, we're not really providing utilities or anything, we're renting the facility, and we're renting different parts of it for over the ten month period of time, so if you think of it something like that, and then once, you know, we can come to, you know, what you all think, and then the board can discuss and come up to a reasonable amount, and we can have, uh, our attorney to work up an agreement and do something, so.
That'd be good.
And we, ideally, I think, we generally like to start things either first, because that's when our fiscal year begins.
Right.
So if we, we still have another month, so we can do.
Do you think that, do you think we need to approach Logan again? I, I mean, I, I, I know the law may require that, huh?
Did they refuse, or just haven't responded?
Well, I asked, I asked for money for the lights, and, you know, I'm always been for all kids, and I still am, and, and whenever somebody turns kids down, you know, that, that bothers me a little bit, whenever you just flat out say no, whenever your kid, like, like their kid is better than our kids that come from Harts going and check them, play in their buddy league, and their buddy league, and I've coached them for a buddy league, our grandson's eleven years old, and I've been coaching them for, they called me this brain coach of her, I said, nah, don't make a fool of it, so he didn't play. But, the thing is, you get tired of seeing certain things go on, and you try to change it, you try to change it, and you, you seem like you're not making any headway, that you're step on, you look back and you say, well, did I really do good? You know, did I do any good? The kids you do, but the adults you don't.
That's right.
But, in your service at Logan, it really isn't Logan County Schools that's using it, it's, it's the people from.
Buddy league, buddy league, buddy league, uh, I think they come down every once, huh?
They are from Logan.
Yeah.
Well, I know that people, that.
But not the school, not the school.
But it's not a school system, like in our situation, where it's actually, you know.
But the buddy league has to give us like a hundred and fifty dollars at one time, and a hundred and fifty another time for using, for using the lights, you know, they donate to that.
Well, good luck to Logan County.
Well, hey, you know, I'll go back and hit them again.
We have no trouble.
But, but the thing about it is, you know, you got to put the kids first, and we have some people that just, I don't know, they can't get yourself out of a room.
Well, we think you all, that's your main goal, and ideally, that's what we try to make ours to, so we're on the same page.
Oh, yes, yes, absolutely, yes, yes, you know.
Get with them, stay at Haas, and then, you know, like Fred mentioned, come back and see what they think, will be a reasonable amount, and then we'll try to see if we can.
We're gonna meet next Tuesday.
Okay, we'll meet, get on the twenty-first, so if you can pass up to then, you can get us a hold of this right here there.
Before July.
Yeah, 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 be good, be great.
You don't have to come back within, you can go and let Chris know, and she can work it up with it.
However you'd like to do it.
That way we could go ahead and, unless you want to come back, we don't mind seeing you, so.
Well, the thing, the thing is, you know, if, if you need me to come back, I'll come back.
Well, why don't you share with Ms. Lucas, what you all think's reasonable, she will then advise us, and then if we think you need to come back, we'll let you know.
Okay, that'll work, that'll work.
We'll be back as good standing. And I have to agree with you that, as long as that building is standing, it does have a sentimental value to many of us.
Yes, yes it does, and, you know, I've, I've heard a lot of people comment on that, you know, and when we had the scrimmage game with Lincoln, and, and Go Central, you'd be surprised that the old, older people that came out to see that, and they said, why can't we do this next year? Well, what, what the plan is, is to give four teams this year, you know, let the Chad Bill come down, Lincoln, and I think Go Central, and Logan, that, you know, if you get people buying in on stuff like that, and you can make some money off of just that, you can.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And then people get back and have a little sentimental.
It really is.
Go down me every night.
Just go down there and start cheering.
Yeah, just take your thing, and so you can.
It was, it was enjoyable to have a, have a game number.
Thanks a lot.
I appreciate you guys listening to me, you know, and if you can help us in any way, we'll, we'll appreciate it.
Okay, appreciate you guys, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, um, we'll, we don't have anybody else to sign in, and Mr. Roy's here, I don't know whether he's here.
About to sit with us on the table.
Oh, okay, I, I thought maybe he was here, want to know how we're going, I just want to sum up, and they will talk about the West Anglin baseball field over there, but maybe you already got an answer about that, haven't you?
Well, they, they told me they could.
Well, that's one thing, you're, you don't need to talk about that, okay, good. All right, I need a motion for administrative, please.
I'm now.
Carol makes a move, and Larry seconds. But, Chris, please.
Okay, item A is the adoption of the 2015-2016 school calendar, there's an attachment. Item B is the following textbooks are presented for public review and comment through May the eighteenth, 2015. Textbooks are available for inspection in the county office, and is therefore the English Language Arts K through twelve, and count K through twelve. Item C, approval to post a position for superintendent of Lincoln County Schools, April the eighth through April the twenty-first, 2015, with employment effective July one, 2015. Item D, valid county student transfer for the 2015-2016 school year from Lincoln County to Kenon County, kindergarten student. Item E is a Marshall University student, Michael Redding, who for observation in class pre-K eight during the spring semester.
Okay, all right, um, if there's any discussion on, the first, item, adoption of the school calendar for next year, any comments that you have, Ms. Lucas or Ms. Miki, anybody have any comments before we?
I don't care, we've thrown my two cents worth in there.
Give us a nickel.
Well, that's my suggestion to the board, would be to, to consider approving calendar A, because of the fact that it's been a past practice of the board to approve the most popular calendar that we put out there for our employees to vote upon. You know, when the calendar was, when those two calendars were developed, there's a lot of people that had their hands involved in that process, including teachers and several administrators, both principals and the central office staff, and we knew going in, when we built the calendar, that it was a calendar, um, that would get some attention, you know, because of some of the pieces of the calendar being that we come back early, there was two weeks off for Christmas break, four weeks off for Christmas break, you know, starting early, you get out earlier, so there, there were pieces of it, the payday, you know, teachers would end up getting paid earlier as a result of that calendar, so I think. So I think going in, we all knew this possibility that the calendar could be the most popular of the two. And, you know, our employees, I think it was two hundred and forty-five over four, I think it was right there, two forty-five for Calendar A and two hundred and six for Calendar B. So that's just my, you know, nickels worth.
Anybody else have anything?
The only thing I would like to see this for us to try to, from now on, I know right now it's kind of passed, but we really need to try to get the counties together, to get Logan County and Lincoln County together, and even Cal County if we can, maybe soon. I wish everybody would be the same, because we have teachers from each area and that has kids in different schools. And I would just like to see us all try to work together and try to have the same time.
We've attempted through recent, many times over the past few years, to try to get a calendar, you know, that we can all follow. And it is, you know, met with a resounding thud. You know, everyone just kind of goes out on their own and develops their calendars. But, you know, we have always tried to maintain a close relationship with the administration of Logan in the development of the calendar.
Especially about that.
So that, you know, our spring break, or Christmas breaks, Thanksgiving breaks, you know, that those are all at the same time, you know, so.
Now Jeff, you were, you know, of course, what we've done for many years now, we've had this voted, employees voting. But all of that really began before the law required these public hearings, right?
Right, and it was never really imposed.
Well, that's what I mean, this was just kind of a courtesy that's been done. Do you know, do other counties contain, I'm just, I'm curious, do other counties do this now?
There are more and more counties that's moved away from the voting process.
Is that because of the public hearing?
Yes, and they've developed one calendar, and that's the calendar that everyone discusses at the public hearings, you know, and that calendar's the one that gets tweaked.
So, and, I mean, I guess the idea is since their, public hearings are now required, which are used not to be required, is that anybody who has any thoughts one way, or, you know, whether they like what's been developed, or they don't, whatever, they, that's their opportunity to come and speak. Because as we've seen really, at our public hearings, we don't have a lot of participation, because I guess everybody assumes that they've already had their opportunity. I'm just, Chris, but most counties don't do that any longer, have the actual.
Fewer and fewer counties have gone, you know, to the voting affairs, as our process for determining the calendar.
Any other members of the board, Ms. Lucas, have any other comments about? All right, well Jeff's kind of recommended A there. I'm, you know, this is a pretty close vote to me, and, but I'm, you know, I'm willing to go along with the majority this year if that's what the rest of the board want to do in adopt Calendar A. Although, once again, I will say that I would like for us to have a consistency in our calendar. I would ideally like to see the first two weeks of August not be used for anything, even for staff to come back, whether they're working in the summer, they know how long they can work, whether they're on vacation, they want to schedule something for the next year, or they, you know, all kinds of activities. Because I know a lot of the people that contact me, you know, because rumors were going around we were going to start August to fit and all these things, that, that this earlier starting, you know, yet there has to be some point that you don't. So, I mean, ideally, what I, me personally, I would like to see the first two weeks not be used. And then that varies because of, you know, the calendar, sometimes you're, the first falls on a Monday and it could be a Sunday, so that changes. But I'd just like to see the time come, and I'll, whatever will, that we could kind of say, you know, that I know as a parent, the first two weeks of school, we can do things family-wise, because our kids aren't going to be starting to school then. And our, as an employee, I know that also, that I can continue to do the second job that I had up through the first couple of weeks, or maybe I'm still even in school then. But that's just my two cents for the future, I guess, for us to think about, maybe when you work next year.
Well, I mean, and this calendar coming back, employees coming back on August twelfth, will squeeze us a little in terms of getting the building, certainly ready to go at the start of the school year, but we'll be ready.
Well, see, that's another thing, I think, by giving them at least two weeks in August, that you also give, what we heard from some of the Principal's Association, of being prepared, and you all here have things to prepare for, too, all the in services, this, that, and the other. But anyway, that being said, the floor is open for any motion as far as adoption of a calendar. If you may want to make a motion. I'll move, we're holding on Calendar A. Mr. Curry makes a motion, and Carol takes her seconds, that we adopt Calendar A. Mr. Curry, Ms. Smith, is there any more discussion about the calendar, either A or B or any other option? Nothing further than, all in favor of Calendar A? Is that an all yes vote?
Yes.
All yes. All yes, Calendar A. You can spread the word there, Mr. Roy.
John, you need to come through, I'm?
No, I don't.
See you, John.
John, he'll have it on Facebook in about three seconds.
It's already there.
We'll, we'll, we'll start hearing the comments, pro and con, here before we leave. Okay, we'll get to item two, the textbooks, is there anything about that anybody have? I guess this, this is standard, it's their year to be up now, I'm assuming.
It is.
Okay, then we have the, I think somewhere I saw where we have a posting that Brenda's prepared for us, and I guess that will go out tomorrow, that goes out upon the county, or the statewide system. Brenda, okay, all right, we've got that there, and the county transferred. Okay, anything, anybody have any questions or comments about any of the items that are left? If not, then we'll call for questions. All in favor of items, Brenda loves me to do this, item B through E. Is that an all yes on B through E?
Yes.
I separate them like that, they're fuzzy. Okay, we'll move to finance, does that have a motion, please? Carol makes a motion, second by Larry.
Item A, the scheduled invoice is totaling six hundred ninety-six thousand nine dollars and eighty cents, eighty-seven cents. You see the attachment, invoice is available for public inspection of the county office. Any questions, see Mrs. Gay.
You like, okay. Okay, I guess everybody's had the opportunity to look through those, make their own judgments. Okay, there's nothing further, all in favor of the finance section, is that an all yes vote?
Yes.
Okay, and we'll go to the personnel section, can I have a motion, please?
Say.
Curry, Wilkinson, Ms. Lucas.
Okay. Well, you all get time to.
Yeah, perhaps, we're going to be ready for this, it's a big thing.
Okay, section A is for resignations, and that's, there's only one. Section B is a leave of absence. Now, starting underneath section B, we start with A, which is the reemployment of short and or long-term substitute professional personnel for the school year two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. These are the retired people, employees. B is the reemployment of short and or long-term substitute professional personnel pending the renewal of their certification for school year two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. Section C is the reemployment of short and or long-term substitute professional personnel pending the renewal of certification for school year two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. Section D is the employment of short and or long-term substitute professional personnel for school year two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. These are the people that go through the RISA training each year. Section E is the reemployment of professional personnel pending their renewal of their certification to be issued a probationary contract for school year two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. F is the reemployment of professional personnel to be issued a probationary contract for school year two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. G is the reemployment of professional personnel pending the renewal of certification to be issued a continuing contract for the school year two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. H is the reemployment of professional personnel to be issued a continuing contract for the school year two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. I is the reemployment of service personnel to be issued a probationary contract for school year two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. J is the reemployment of service personnel to be issued a continuing contract for school year two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. K is the reemployment of substitute service personnel for school year two thousand fifteen, Then the termination of extracurricular contracts, the athletic professional or service. On the recommendation of the superintendent to terminate the extracurricular contracts of the following coaches, professional in service, as provided for under West Virginia Code eighteen A dash four dash sixteen, eighteen A dash two dash two, eighteen A dash three dash two A, eighteen A dash four dash A B, eighteen A dash two dash seven, and other applicable statutes as amended. This recommendation is effective at the conclusion of the two thousand fifteen school year. At the bottom, it's to rescind the February twenty-fourth, two thousand fifteen approval of a reduction enforced for the following service personnel for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year per West Virginia Code eighteen A dash four dash A B K. The last page is to rescind the February twenty-fourth, two thousand fifteen approval of transfer for the following employees for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year per West Virginia Code eighteen A dash four dash A B K. Questions?
Okay. Do I have anything?
Chris, I noticed that Eddie is not on here, but it may be something that he failed to fill out. I noticed that they are forth this morning, but I'm not calling them, I'm going to take them. What I was going to say is, we invariably, almost every year, miss someone, and we will add, and we will add it at the next meeting. Because usually, whenever people look over there, it's like, oh, I don't see my name, and they call us or email us or something. But it has taken, you know, a lot of time to try to make sure we get, but we leave enough time that we can add someone that we've missed, so that's one, yes. So we will make sure that we get them out there.
Hold on, D, the substitute professional personnel through RISA. Now, all of these people, exactly how does that work? Have they already been trained through the RISA?
Yes, and then they have to, after so long, they have to go back and do it again.
Now, what, if there are new people that want to become substitutes, can they get in on this thing?
They go to Tina, and she does all of the paperwork, basically, tells them when the training is, because RISA only offers it every so often, and then she assigns them a certain time through RISA, because they have to do observations, they have online training. Then they set up an interview with Mr. Minkip. They come through and do that, and they go through all the back road check, and the state issues us certification, and they will tell us what area we can substitute in.
But I'm, obviously, we have needs of substitutes, right?
We do.
And I, I know there's, I've had people contact me wanting to know how this works, I just didn't know if it was available for new people.
Yes, it is.
Is that training occurring in the summertime?
It's periodically throughout the year, so, you know.
All different times of the year?
About every two months or so, they'll start a new group of people through the process. But anyone interested, we just need to get in touch with Tina Black. She can, she can walk them through.
Okay. Okay, do I have anything else? I think Trish gave us an explanation of his last two items earlier.
Yes, yes, it was.
All right, if anybody has anything else, then on the personnel, is that an all yes vote on the personnel items?
Yes.
Okay, all right, let's go to comments and concerns, the LCHSA, come, please.
Of course, I, if it sent you all this today.
Yeah.
Oh.
If you have an extra copy, Mr. Anthony, if you have one.
If you don't, that's all right, I'll, I'll probably get it.
You want to run a mic?
Yes, no, that's all right, I'll, I'll move your next to Steve, and look at this.
I can't come in. Got to home.
We flew into Cincinnati about five thirty this morning, and so the time I go home, went to bed, and got up, and said, oh my gosh, it's time to go.
Plan from your crowd.
I know.
Is there no direct flight?
Well, it was, but Heather went with us, so we decided from Cincinnati.
Trish, do you have a lot of time to team yesterday?
Well, not Cincinnati, but in Vegas, it was beautiful.
I was thinking of it.
Well, she was sure they, she shouldn't have took any spring break.
Georgetown, where Heather lives, and it flooded church, and a bunch of holes, that was.
I get, I get, Cincinnati, the Reds, I had to first take that. I'm not going to go with her again.
Oh.
We had several holes, it wasn't, it wasn't too bad yesterday, but we had several call in yesterday evening this morning, so we had some holes out there, we had some places where we didn't have subs, teachers.
Now, see, I, I thought about that, we shouldn't have took any spring break, we should have put the end of the year, because they're going to take off for us.
Well, if we had done that, we would have had school on June twenty-second, been last day of school.
Well, I mean, that's, that's a joke.
Why not? I'm just saying, you look at when the calendar fell this year, we had to make up the eighteenth, which, and then Friday is West Virginia Day, the holiday, and we would have come back on Monday, June twenty-second. And how many you think were going to come?
I mean, if it weren't for that, it wouldn't have been there an hour or a day and a half. Shame.
Okay, good.
Okay, I think Mr. Smith had talked earlier regarding the athletic facility, the complex for the football in the track. And he had spoken with Phil Turf, and they were agreeable to come and do a survey. And what they, at that time, they said it would be, it wouldn't cost us anything. But what they have sent to Dana, and it alludes to the conversation that they had had, and he said, "As we talked about the costs for the engineering survey, eighty-five hundred dollars, should the Lincoln County Board of Education do the project at some point, then it would not cost us anything." But this is for in case, that we would choose someone else. Should they decide not to do the project, then they would expect eighty-five hundred dollars for the survey, survey drawings and the engineering that they're going to be doing upfront. He also stated that they could begin approximately one week after receiving notice to proceed. He said, "I expect approximately ten days to complete and deliver their survey." So that, and I'm sure you all read the email. So Dana is just wanting to know, should we proceed?
Okay, first, does everybody think that this is what we were looking for as far as the project? What they're proposing to do here? Do an engineered survey of the site?
Yes, I think so, but I guess you probably can't answer this, because how long is that? Eighty-eight, eighty-five hundred dollars, how long do we have to decide what we're going to do? How many years?
No timeline. He, Dana asked if there's a timeline for buying the turf from them, and the answer was no.
You mean, twenty years now, they?
That's kind of.
That was a question that I asked, Fred, how long, you know? That was a question that I asked, Fred, how long, you know, and so this is what, this was the answer. He asked if there was a timeline, and I'm sure it would probably have to be within a reasonable time, but, but he didn't specify.
The longer you leave, the better value. Wait fifty years.
Yeah.
But after a new one by the end.
Personally, I think we need to have the survey done, because there's a question in my mind, whether the place is big enough for a football field on the track.
Well, they say that here almost, don't they?
Well, they, they want to, they want to, said they were determined if there was that.
Yeah, we really need to know if the, yeah, so I think they're, yeah, the, the idea behind it, I mean, that's what I was saying, to do this is kind of what we wanted to do, to see where the field would be, and if all these things were feasible, we'd have the track, and seeing what the levels of survey and all that, you know, of course, Dana's saying, I guess we all understand, it has to be cut down a few more feet or something. So this would tell, have us, give us the ability to know what all that was, right?
Yes.
And Fred's issued there a question, I guess, just, you know, what they say, do we pay them now, and then we aren't obligated to them later on, although they could certainly bid on it, or have a quote right now, they're on the REC list, so they're right in the running, and just like.
If we pay them now, they cannot pay you eighty-five hundred dollars off, they get the job. Now, Trish, what's the discussion there? I, I didn't understand this, I don't know whether anyone else did or not, about the river.
I don't understand that either.
Surveying the river, I wonder, does this have to do with the ball?
First paragraph down there, under engineering survey. Does anybody know that?
I've not seen it.
See, I'm trying to give you a coffee.
Well, what you're saying here, Larry's, I have the same question here, because they keep talking about, they're gonna do a topographic survey, will end approximately twenty-five feet past the top of the slope at the riverbank, so I guess that's where it drops off for us, apparently, I think.
Okay.
Above the Mud River. However, we will survey the edge of the Mud River for horizontal, vertical location. I mean, you know.
Sounds like they are gonna go all the way up to the river.
Well, we're just, I mean, I can't speak for Larry, but I don't understand why they're doing all that.
It says we will not survey the entire riverbank.
Have, have any of those guys ever seen the locations?
Yes.
That, you just, that's a long way from that, to the river, the.
Yeah, I don't, where they think we're one foot building there or not.
I kind of, the way I get it, it comes, it sounds to me like horizontal and vertical, that they want to be sure that it's high enough above the river, to not flood that area.
Maybe that's where they're starting the survey.
I don't.
Maybe that's pointed to where they want to start the survey, but it, it doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, it's so far away, me, and not whether that's in the floodplain or all, if we go with the floodplain.
Well, I mean, if it's in the floodplain, the high school is lower than the football field is.
Well, I'm saying, where that drops off down there, it might be in the floodplain.
Well, yeah, we're not used to that.
Yeah, that's, that's the part that's confusing. Okay, well.
That needs to be clarified as far as I can.
Well, we could, but.
I think they will, when they do the survey, they'll.
Because they're gonna look at all the utilities and all these things we've talked about before, and hopefully identify some that we.
I notice they're not gonna really be too helpful on the utilities, because they say they can't assure us of any non-ferris pipes and so forth. In other words, plastic pipes are there, they, they're not gonna give us any indication at all, or they won't.
Well, but, but they also talk about the missed utility and all that, I mean, if you can't miss utility, then don't do it, and these people can't do it with the expertise they have, you know, and if we don't already know it, I don't know how else you're gonna find it at.
There really wouldn't be anything out there on the football field anyway, should there be?
I don't think there should. It's a big thing.
I wouldn't think so. So I don't think that would be a problem.
Hopefully not. We've, on the, where the first tennis courts were, we found that wasn't a pretty good spot. But there's, obviously, unlike you, Larry, I hope they can be, I'm thinking on the other end. But, of course, this is what we've talked about, before we can do anything, we need to have a survey where everything's gonna be, enter B F E, or track and all, then, once we get this, and it's agreeable to us, and seems to be feasible and doable, then we can then, the next step would be, start to use some of the funds we have set aside for the football field fund, just begin to, along the volunteers, to cut down the field to the contour of the B.
I mean, I'm, I mean, this survey will come out of the fund they cut out there, not out of county funds.
Right out of the football fund.
Yes, right.
So, but I'm just saying, the first phase is get surveyed, the second phase would be to begin to cut it down to the right size.
Yeah, this is the first thing we have to do.
Right. Then the third phase, I'm not sure what it is.
Take more bank off, in my opinion.
Well, I'm just saying, I would love to see turf out there, but I don't know, maybe it won't happen. Okay, but for right now, is there anything that you need for, do you want us to?
I want you to tell, so I can tell him, go ahead.
We want you to go ahead, I guess.
Okay, go ahead. That's all I have. All right, that's all we need.
Okay, and then, are we, do we, is there any more needed on the eighty-five hundred dollars at this time? Are they willing to wait?
Hell. I, well, I could ask if he wants to get something, or definite, in ten years.
Does any, I mean, what does, do they think is, find out how long they're willing to let it die, I guess, I don't, but we'd like to do it, but it just seems to need it.
Oh, some wealthy contributor will come along and solve the problem for you.
And the time it's gonna take, somebody's bound to hit the lottery, right? But now, that, I think this is certainly on the right track, and get, do what, wherever we get it.
If you show good faith, that, that we're, we're doing something, it's slow, but we are doing something, then you may possibly have someone, although they.
You never know, Fred, seriously.
It's possible.
Never know.
Hope so. Okay. Anything about that? Anything more?
No, I'm good.
Okay, then what about the C P E assistant principal, Bean Drake?
Okay, I know you all had indicated to me earlier that you would like to have someone that would be focusing specifically on the C P E program, and I guess my question is, how will that look as far as a person, how do you want me to proceed with a job description to bring to you all? Would it be something that would be in the line of an assistant principal that is over the C T E program, or are we looking at a director that is, and that will make a little bit of a difference on, you know, on some of the job description, number of days, that, those kinds of things, I just need some direction. We've got, Mr. McKiff and I have already talked to some counties, but we, we're not quite sure.
What, what are, what are some of the other counties?
Uh, well, they're all unique, and, and, and pretty much that's what they said, and, you know, it depends on your county, because we're, we're a little bit unique, because it's a comprehensive high school. You know, and many counties have the centers, the career tech centers, some of them have multi-county centers, so it's just a kind of, what, what is it that we need for Lincoln County? Mr. McKiff, you want to?
Well, I think. Well, what about now, is there, those that have directors, can you give us an idea how many days they work?
It varies, it varies around each county, it just, it does, you know.
Well, do we have any students there in the summertime?
No.
Well, why would we need a person in summertime?
Well, other than we have the way a person that.
She's two forty.
Two forty.
She occasionally has kids who are over there to sleep.
During their.
It's not that often.
Now, what about this automotive thing that goes on over there in the sun, is it through Southwest?
That's the, that's.
So we're not really.
We're not really.
Bothering that?
No.
Is that the only team that are there in the summer?
Yes.
I agree.
Right now. It is.
What's happened to all the adult programs we used to have in the past?
Well, Trish, did, you give us the west.
State department, the state department.
They were gone. That's in the land.
We, I got the site to go pull those down, where they are on the state website, Fred. I, I met with the person from the Department of Ed, Mr. McKiff, and Mr. Snyder, Mr. Christian, myself, and the health occupation, and Mr. Christian, and we talked about getting a list of what is in demand, and it, it's going to, and on the area, you know, the area, part of the state, the demands of, of that particular, I want to say supply and demand, or, or are the demands. They also have a program that they, I'm not sure if, if Lincoln County High School is utilizing this, but there's a program now that they have on site for students to go in, because you talked about how much the demand it would be, but it not only gives demand, it tells them how much that, that particular occupation would pay, to give the students much more of an idea. Is this what I want to do? This is how much this, what I have to do to, to get certified in this program. But yes, I did, I don't have the list yet, but I, I found where to go with this.
Well, I guess my question is now, why are we advertising for a welder if we do not know where that's a field that we need to be at training in?
Well, I think there's always.
Well, there may be, but we gotta see if the students are interested in it, and we gotta see if there's a demand around here for it. I agree, there probably is.
We have so many to sign up for that class in order to have, I can't, we have one welder.
Five or six, I think, some of them.
Well, that, that's what I've asked before, have the students, do they, have they been surveyed yet, you know, as to what I want to take next year?
They're, they're gonna do that soon, they're almost to that point, just to survey the kids.
Well, I agree with Fred, I mean, the establishment, to have a program, there's two things, you have to know, one, do the kids want to take it? And secondly, are there jobs if they do take it? And that's what I, I think they're for you.
And you all brought that up once before, and I think, Mr. Chrisley, we were kind of holding off on that, Fred, but I think Mr. Chrisley had, pregnant, if I'm wrong, had called Ms. Joanne and asked her when it was gonna be advertised.
Well, the reason I did that was because somebody had contacted me that was going, that was interested in bidding on the job, and he asked me when it was gonna be advertised. So I called her to say, because I even told him, I said, you know, I don't, I'm, they're gonna advertise these jobs, whatever Joanne told me. I said, but right now, I'm, I'm not certain that this job is even going to, and so I, and I was just trying to find out from her, when it would be if we did it.
So I think maybe when she talked to me about that, I just had felt like, okay, maybe they're expected.
It'd be on the list, but.
But now, have we ever, what about like the others we talked about, the Pro Star, and, or something, or the, what's the, what do they call the nursing program, Miss Elkins?
Health occupation.
You know, have, you know, that, those are others, and once again, we had the meeting with the high school C T E people, and then Mrs. Elkins indicated that there were forty kids that had an interest in that class, but she could only handle twenty of them. But there were, that meant that there was a whole nother class there, that, it obviously seemed to me like, because I know there's a health need out there, you know, that's obvious, and if I asked to do a survey for me, that's a great need. So if there are twenty kids that want to take a class, you know, it seemed to me like that would be one who'd want to offer it. We'd survey the kids, and that indeed is true, again.
Well, what we found out the day that we met with the lady from State Department that is over the health, health occupations, and then Mrs. Elkins had indicated, and she spoke to you all, that there would be a need for an additional person. In, in actuality, there is not a need. The, the way the program is structured, and the way that her board of advisors would be, and she has been in contact, direct contact, with the nursing home, with primary, Lincoln Primary Care, she was going to be in contact with a couple of other health facilities, I want to say, the dentist office, something else she mentioned, Mr. McKiff, if you recall. But this will be the avenue, working with these particular facilities, and getting a M O U, a memorandum of understanding with them, in order to be able to help provide those clinical hours for the students, and they will be coming out of that program with different certifications. And that was very, was probably a good two, two and a half hour meeting. I, I felt there were many things that were cleared up, as far as what was necessary, what they needed to do. I think everyone in the room came out with a better understanding of how that program needed to be set up, and in order for those students to be able to come out. And Mrs. Elkins is certified in many of those areas, to be able to ensure that those students lead with the certification.
So we could possibly have as many as forty students in the program?
Well, that, Mrs. Elkins can only accommodate so many, right?
I want to say, Mr. McKiff, is there twenty per, it was like a twenty sophomore or juniors and twenty seniors?
Yeah, I think she could, she could accommodate up to forty, so, yeah.
Yes.
First-years students, and then second-years students, right.
Yes, the, and, and.
Why is, why, if there are forty that were interested, why weren't, weren't forty able to do it then?
I'm not sure, I, I even understood her that night.
Well, because I, Trish, we're talking about two different, one, and I appreciate what Trish has done here, because she has clarified one of the concerns that have been brought to my attention in the past, that we had people leaving there that weren't certified for some of the programs they wanted to pursue, and so she's gotten that, we, we have an answer on that, and I'm certainly glad of that. And now we know, you know, what, Mrs. Elkins, if she's the only one there, how they have to do and work in conjunction with the others to make sure they're certified. But the other, and what, maybe I misunderstood what she said, that they, that, I took it clean, that, you know, she had twenty students, and there were really forty that would like to take that, but for some reason she couldn't do it, and maybe I misunderstood, and she can accommodate forty in conjunction with these other people that serve that.
It's a clinical.
Yeah, maybe I misunderstood, but.
That's the way I understood.
What, was that Fred?
The way that you said.
That she could only handle twenty.
Yeah, so, that's all, obviously, if you didn't have anybody to watch them, yeah, I don't, you don't.
Right, so now, now that she understands, I think, better in the utilization of the health facilities around, and being able to coordinate their clinical time, there are certain numbers that she can be with, in the varying facilities, but some of those facilities will be able to mentor or be in those supervisory kind of positions that we.
Whatever how we can do it, we can accommodate forty kids, is what I'd like to see. If Mrs. Elkins can accommodate forty kids and use the other, in conjunction with these other entities, do it, accommodate forty, and they come out there certified, that's wonderful. But, but we just need to clarify that, if she can't, for whatever reason, then we, I think we should want to make, we might want to consider having somebody else that is doing the same thing, so we could accommodate forty.
Okay.
Because once again, we know the healthcare field is one where there's needs.
Right.
And if there's forty could come out there, I just would hate to see twenty kids not be able to get into a program they had an interest in, because, you know, she wasn't able to accommodate, if she's able to do it, that's even better.
Well, I don't recall the exact number that she has already in her classes, but it was, it didn't.
Yeah, yeah, I, I'm not sure, when she's talking about that forty number, if that was just one particular group of kids at some point in time, I, I can't recall it.
Well, you all just have, and then they'll go back to what Fred mentioned a while ago, they need to do the survey, so they'll know how many wants to do it next year.
Well, I was gonna say, remember the, I did follow up with Dana on the type of survey, and remember me saying that he indicated that they had not in years completed a survey on what they would want to have. They take the programs that they have, and they survey the students that might want to be in those particular programs. And so my question, you know, to him was, well, why are you not, or why can you not do a survey for students to say, what would you? do a survey for students to say, what would you be interested in taking if it could be provided?
Yeah, exactly.
Do both surveys.
That's why.
On your own and add different.
Yeah, see what they might have an interest in, and then we could see if there was enough of interest in, is that a field that people need a job in?
There's a need for.
Maybe that's what we're going to be offering, is do a, something that they don't have any interest in.
With the certification that we're wanting to have now, that she's going to be able to provide, you're going to have it in any pre-student interest, you can bet on that.
Well, then we want to be able to make sure we accommodate.
How can we find out what certifications that she can provide?
Thank Trish.
Because, I mean, in the past, she would train them, have so much medical training, and then I could get ones from her to see what she had trained them on, then I had to pick up what she had left out and provide them so many hours, I could use her hours, but I had to provide them so many hours in order for them to just be a caregiver. I'm not sure what she can really certify them in.
Well, I, I have a whole list.
That's what you.
I do, I, I just, well, if, if you would want me to, I can walk down the aisle, because I have it.
I'd like to see, because I'm, at that time, she couldn't even certify them to be a caregiver. I would like to see somebody be able to certify into a botany, and then.
That, yes, that's one of them.
You know, like, different technicians and things like that.
EKG, for, yes, she's certified for that.
I think that's what Ms. Lucas has done, she's talked to me about that, where she's met with the state department to try to clarify all that, so that she, and that's one of the ones that you'd mentioned.
We went to EKG, I mean, they could walk right into H I G or the hospital or anywhere with that certification, and they would go to the top of the list.
See, now she does certain parts, the way I understand it, they might go to the primary care center and somebody at there works with them to get another component of it.
The clinical hours, and, and some of it, she has the equipment or whatever there in the room. She, you know, that room over there is, you know, equipped with, you know, quite a bit of, you know, great technology that they would need, but yes, but it, it was a very productive meeting, I believe, and they walked away with a good plan to make sure that these students next year walk away with certifications.
All right, so we've kind of gotten that, and we've gotten off track here.
But, but Fred, I did follow up, and I, and I will go back to see why, why they cannot go ahead before the year is up to do a survey, asking what they would be interested in. They're not interested in either offering, but other areas.
Okay, can we just go back to the position of your?
Position, yes.
Okay, now, does anybody have any, I think, thoughts or references or whatever?
I know some of you think, and you may be right, I'm not saying that you're not, that a part-time person would be able to do that position there. We have Mr. Christian now as, as a kind of a part-time person, and it's not working.
I don't know, is there anybody in favor of a part-time position?
Well, I'm not in favor of it, but I mentioned it once, but if, if we couldn't, I mean, if we took a half.
I think we have to.
Half a full time, I don't think. And I, I am opposed to an assistant principalship.
Right, I am too. We need a director that will go out and help build these programs and oversee the ones that are gone. In my opinion, some of them that we have now are not doing what they should be doing. We all know that, but he needs to be there to oversee them, evaluate them, and keep them on the ball, plus go out and pull in different programs and research, and I think it would take a full-time person to do that. Used to, we had, had kids coming from all over the county, from Harts and from Duval, into this building right here, and they came out with a better certification and different things then than what we have now. We've got this state-of-the-art school there, and it's not doing nearly what it did when it was here.
I think we all agree with that, that there's a need there. Every, I'm in favor of the full-time person.
So, what?
Okay, so we're all agree, okay, so far, we've got that much.
Full-time?
We want a full-time person, director, and not an assistant. Okay? Now, and I agree with what Carol said one hundred percent, but, you know, that person needs to be there all day, not only to evaluate the programs and, and evaluate the instructors and all this kind of thing, but they need to be, also have time to go out and get with business and others outside to try to attract them. So, there's all kinds of things they can have, and I expect.
I mean, they could be working on coordinating stuff on this Joanne's program we were talking about, with the nursing home.
They could do.
I mean, there's plenty they can do.
Well, and he works right in with this new simulated workplace.
Right, right, yeah, I can think of the name, that's right.
On staff evaluation, are we going to run into a conflict there with the new person that we've hired?
Well, we should hire someone that can run out of the way to.
We don't mean with the new.
CTE, that shouldn't be an issue.
Yeah, I think Mr. Mathis, Mr. Mathis, I mean, it's separate, what, who's his son? He's supposed to be with.
He's with the whole classroom.
Okay, but this person here would have to be able to evaluate their.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, so that tells me they have to have administrative certificate. Aren't these professionals?
Right.
Okay, so, we now know we've got a full-time person, and we want a full-time person, who's a director, has to have administrative certificate, I don't know what else they might have, y'all can see that from the others, how many days they won't work?
That's would be better than than what we are.
Well, are we going to have to establish a new salary schedule or a new part of the salary, because right now, we don't have a.
There's five questions, you know.
Well, what we, my questions, what we can do is come up with, with some things and then bring it to you all, and then two or three, like, we kind of.
We can give you a lot of good starting.
I know.
Can you know the direction? Can you look at the comprehensive schools, I don't know how many there are in the state, and just see what they're doing, and just bring that back to us?
Yes.
Yeah, but, and, but you'd also have to check and see what they're doing in the summertime, will we need one in the summertime?
Everything they're doing.
Right, yeah.
Bring us our picture.
Okay, how, our assistant principals work two hundred and fifteen days?
Yes.
Okay. To me, I don't really see this person working more than them, if as much. You know, I don't know what the others work, but once again, we, we know what goes on in the summer, automotive, which is really something intensive, so, and the ag, it's doing a little bit of whatever they do in the summer. So, you know, I don't really see a great need beyond the school year myself. I mean, I think two fifteen might be too many.
Well, we can give you, we can give you some options.
Well, I mean, the, the person obviously going to work two hundred days because everybody else is, but I don't know that they need fifteen more days, the equivalent of what the assistants would have. I mean, I'd like to see them make, even work more than two hundred five or something, just to be able to close their programs out.
Even if we put them at two hundred and they see that's not going to be enough, they can always come back.
Well, I don't see any of the assistants.
This is a little bit of law, if, if.
Does that have to come in?
Yes, it does. If you hire them more, for more than two hundred days, you know, like two hundred five, you're allowed to extend their employment days without posting again.
You're the partner.
So, in the future, so, if you have a position that is over two hundred days, if it's just two hundred and one day, as long as it's more than two hundred days, you are allowed to extend that contract for that employee without reposting that particular position.
Back in the day, you'd abolish, you'd do a retest.
But if it's two hundred, you can't, you have to repost.
Right, if it's two hundred, yes, you'd have two hundred five, sounds good.
I like that. But now, back to what I was saying a minute ago, Jeff, we do not have a salary schedule that talks about, we have directors here at the central office.
Right.
So, we, that's what you'd have to develop or add, we'd have to revise the salary schedule for a director at the high school level, right?
Yes. Why don't you look at that, please?
And how much you would pay, that'd be, we'd have to decide it.
Can we look at, like, what the other counties pay, but then again, taking into consideration their enrollment compared to ours? I mean, you know, I know we can't pay one, Cabal pays or.
They're going to get whatever a teacher gets, and then they're going to get a daily supplement, I assume. Was it, the directors here at the central office make forty dollars more a day, I believe? Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, here at the central office, you know, they, they get, what they would get is if they were a teacher, plus, you know, considering the number of days that they had on, and then they get forty dollars more per day. So, this person here would get what they were going to give as a teacher and all for, let's say, two hundred five a day, and then we have to really decide what daily supplement they would get beyond that.
And it doesn't necessarily have to be what the directors.
Exactly.
So, it all works.
I would think it would be less than what the director would get, they have a lot more responsibility.
We'll research that.
Well, give me some options, it's how you want them.
Well, we, we really give you some good clues.
I dare you, yeah. This is like, who's on first?
I think we all agree, we need to have a good program with somebody that's really energetic, willing to go out and look and see what's out there and, and in the future, see what program we want to offer, and, of course, then they're going to see what equipment you need and all that kind of stuff, and maybe they can go and beg, borrow, start a mare off the others to get that. Okay, anything else you need to know?
Did anyone ever get a list of the heating, air conditioning, equipment we've got out there, material that somebody set and stored in a room out there? I'd like to know what's left.
Heating and air conditioning equipment.
Yeah, I had that class out there once.
Well, I was getting, I was hearing you say, that's one of the, the programs that Mr. Snyder that day said, we still have the equipment to start an HVAC. I didn't say, you know, what, give me the list, but that's what he said, we still have the equipment to start an HVAC.
Yeah, I was just wondering how much equipment we had.
I believe it's all there, Mr. Curry. I know at one point in time, Dana even walked me into the shop area, and the mess that he pointed out to me.
He did need to, but, you know, I'm not sure what I was looking at, but, but then he said, here's, here it is, you know, but.
We'll follow up.
Okay, all right, so that, you know, then we'll give some kind of graph, I guess, together, and then we can go with the particulars, or later on, right?
Did we have a shop area for HVAC?
He said they have one, that's what he said that day, we still have the room.
Okay.
Because I think right now, they, they have a, a class in that particular room, right, Mr. McKiff?
Yes, Mr. McCormick, Mike McCormick.
Okay, they have someone else in that they could move.
Broadcast, broadcast, or they're not watching.
And that's another thing, have we got room out there anymore, what we gave them?
He said we did, he said we can move that person from.
Well, that might be the HVAC, that space would be.
Well, that's what somebody, I did, we get the first, they'll be able to answer all those questions, how much room we got, what equipment we have, what their interest is, everything that. Okay, nothing else listed here? Anybody have anything else, under comments, your concerns, anyone to talk about? I just wanted to know if we needed to advertise for substitute mechanics for, for next year.
Good question.
Well, I'm just asking, you know, because I know here recently, we got, we had a couple of subs off, or a couple of our mechanics were off on the same day, and we didn't have it, we had one mechanic, and his day ended at two o'clock, and so we didn't have anything back, and we couldn't get any subs, because I don't think there are any.
We don't have it.
Yeah, I'm just saying, shouldn't we have substitute mechanics?
Well, we normally advertise whatever the director or, or someone tells us, yes, we have this need, but definitely, I, I see that need, I don't see any reason that we need.
I mean, there may, I don't even have a lot of interest every day, you know, that there might, because I, it just seems like we, we have substitute everything else that we need, we might have it for buses if they break down, we could go fix it.
Steve, will the superintendent's job be advertised in the local paper? Because we've only, we've only one publication.
I believe we're thinking now that it will just go out to the state.
To the system.
Okay. And because that way, it goes to virtually every entity it does, but then the county, it goes to each school, so all the county people, Sean, I would think.
So, make sure.
Okay, anybody have anything else? Okay, Matt, we're, let's, we'll adjourn until April the twenty first at six o'clock here in Hamlin. Carol makes the motion, second please.
I'll share.
Mr. Curry, then all yeses.
Yes.
All yes, okay.